Through the minutes. But speaking of travel, I returned from Detroit. I think it was last Monday and we made a presentation along with the Mississippi Development Authority to welcome the IAMC, which is Industrial Asset Management Council. It's a pretty good mixture of a lot of the state development authorities as well as the heavy duty industrial folks in development of industry and those kinds of things around the world. This conference that I was welcoming them to, it'll take place at Bora Vage in 23, April 1st through the 5th. About 500 folks we expect, but this was originally scheduled to be in 2020. So it, I think, we kind of gave them a great expectation of having a good time and we're looking forward to that. So it'll be a good conference, but it was, the travel was worth it, you know, Sunday through Monday night coming through Atlanta. We got it home alright, but it was interesting and I think we're positioned to move forward based on some of the, you know, comments. We're looking forward to. The next conference following Biloxi will be in London. So I might ask you for a little, you know, not first class trip, but you know, we'll see if we can get there.
We could probably get you to Newfoundland.
It's okay too.
You can make it the rest of the way.
Yeah. Alright, well that concludes my report. Unless Mike, do you have anything to add?
I just want to remind the council that this Saturday is our annual auction and the departments have been working very hard to surplus all their excess equipment, older equipment, older trucks and so forth, so it's gonna be quite a show. It's right there behind, we say the crazy horse area if that means anything to anybody, but it's right there behind Fire Station 7.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude your report?
If you really want to ask more chicken.
Mr. Mayor, that conclude your report?
That's gonna conclude my report, thank you.
We'll move on to council reports, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, the main thing we had was downtown Saturday. They had to drive through with the cars, quite a crowd. I think they wanted to move, the Sunday's amazing, I mean, people picked up on that and it was packed Sunday. It turned out really great. We gave a ton of candy, everybody was happy. So that turned out to be a nice thing.
A public information office and officers did a good job in getting that word out and it was, an hour's worth of really good fun. I think a thousand or so people came through, cars.
It was really nice.
Yep.
Perfect weather too, so it was really good. Second thing, Mayor, I know we fiddled up on Survivor Park, they put the new playground equipment in, people already use it. We need to fence that in as soon as possible. So I don't know if you have that set up to fence it in?
It's all part of that bond money.
All still wide open. So we need to do that and need to fence in the dog park because they're waiting for that too, those are in the same areas right there. So I was just wondering if you had that lined up because out there playing, there's a bunch of, they're small kids, so they'll run all over the place. So we need to just enclose that area. It looks great, playground equipment is great, on Business Park is great, but those parks are pretty much fenced in. That's the only one that's not fenced in yet. So we need to get that one done. And I know we talked about it and you said you're gonna try to take care of the fence around the Grush Center. It's all falling down, so I mean, we got that all lined up to do that too. We had to put that off a bid, I imagine.
Of course, yeah.
Okay. And I know we're working on that bond money. You have the 200,000 set aside to do the concession stand, or do we have to pass that?
No, it's passed.
That's already done.
A while back, and that's part of the bond money that will be not pledged, you know, from the Holloway 5.5, the remaining, we may be able to allocate even more depending on how things bid out, if you know what I mean. Yeah, that's in the mix. It was part of the initial 6.5 too, so that was in the whole bond allocation.
Yeah, I just make sure we like to get that done and then get those, another 12 courts added there as possible. They had one in Houston, you know, 600 people participated in the pickleball. I know it's big, I keep telling you that so you pay attention, it's huge in the United States right now.
I always pay attention to you.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to do that. And you've been nice here lately too, it's been good.
Okay.
Say huge, huge?
Oh, another thing I wanted to bring up, I know you're working, where are we at? Do we have to meet again about the pay raises? Or what are we gonna, say again?
We're working out right now for the remainder of the, I think we've, 604 minus 190, 91 I believe, Chief, 191? Anyway, but that's in the mail.
And I noticed the last thing I wanted to tell you about, got someone to talk about the swimming house.
Yep.
Oh, Peter, can we?
I have an update on that.
I know we donated to the city, can we, how's that work as selling or transfer of doing what we have to do to it?
At this point, we've got a repair estimate of, we have an inspection done of what the repairs that need to be done and it's my suggestion that we take a look at it and try to estimate what those expenses are gonna be so we can come to a decision on it. I know there are at least two interested parties in the property and that's just something, what to do with the property still to be decided.
Yeah, and I think there's some evaluation at one point in town, I think it was a Miramar for things around there. So I mean, there's several options that we would look at, but on our radar would be, and again, there's some historic tax credit grants as well as, you know, we're not talking about funding, you know, the whole thing and I think in People's Bank there's a set aside amount too that we can use into doing that. So it'll be a separate and a part of some of the funding sources that we're, we play with, but there is, I think, historic tax credits that would certainly apply and as well as the archives and the State Department of Archives and History. So.
My recommendation would be if somebody wants a bond and move into it, sell it, put it back on the market, they want to repair the house or something, let them go do that.
I don't.
We don't need another building to maintain, that's for sure.
Well, we can talk about that.
Alright, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gons.
Yes. Just like George said, we had a great, great wonderful trick or treat, great wonderful Halloween, a lot of the kids, and even last night, a lot of the kids came out to celebrate. I just wanted to make mention that we had a great and wonderful time with all the kids.
I think he was swinging a pirate sword or something.
Oh, absolutely.
Like a Johnny Depp up there, so I don't know.
Absolutely. On behalf of the Rotary Club, Black's Rotary Club, we wanted to make a presentation to the police and fire to their Fort Myers Strip in Florida. So wanted the Chiefs, Chief Miller, want to give a donation on behalf of the Rotary Club where I'm serving as the president.
That's good.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Tisdale, ask how much was it?
A couple of dollars.
Okay. Alright, Ms. Newman? Mr. Demme?
Mike, if you get a moment, will you just give me an update, send me an email about where we're at with the Bluffs and the Ravenwood, Laurelwood area, I know we talked about it at the last meeting and?
If you would go in over to Bluffs tomorrow, you'll see they've actually started already. They saw cut the pieces that are taken out and they'll be doing the demolition starting tomorrow. That road's blocked for now and there's a detour so that people can get out. We're also waiting for, on the other Laurinwood, Ravenwood, we're waiting for the contractor, the new contractor to walk it and give us an estimate and we should probably have that for the end of the week.
Okay, I know we also, some of the other roads back there that were in need, so if we can get together on that also, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for the update. Mr. Mayor, Mike, I spoke with Sherry and I know some things are gonna come across the agenda next week regarding Mississippi Power and our attempt to figure out what all needs to be done at the Pops Ferry Fields, so.
We were issuing a PO to them today for, I think, $4,000 for them to do a study and tell us what needs to be fixed.
Right.
And what, how much it would cost to turn all the lighting over to them and lease it back.
Well, that's exactly what I was referring to.
Very good.
Thank you for that, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Demme. Mr. Tisdale?
Are we looking at any new strategies for the homeless? I know that we, I just don't want to forget about, they're still with us and I know that most folks worried about two things. Number one, since we're a tourist destination, they worry about the appearance and the second thing is it's strangers coming up to me or you or constituents asking for money or food or whatever. And I see a lot of folks on the corner holding signs, I say a lot of folks, at least out by Walmart in my section of town, I'm sure that's in other areas as well, but are we doing anything differently that we hadn't done for the past few years?
Well, you know, you're aware of what, you know, the Mary Simons Group and trying to develop an assessment center with some immediate, you know, reaction, but I think Chief was mentioning that the homeless encounters went down about 40 or 50 incidents this week and, you know, these new faces too, I think we're seeing.
We are, homeless encounters are down, but the increased officer presence is up and we, you know, we keep a daily, try to determine how they got here, where they came from, if somebody funded their trip here, we see that quite often. And then we try to find the resources for them to get them some help if that's what, indeed, what they need. And there's several organizations now trying to put together, coming at it from several different angles to try to put together housing and other things for them.
I think the chief and Chris took an initiative about a month and a so back that caused some, you know, some ask, you know, what we're doing, what, how we were gonna do that, but I think we identified some folks from the mental health end, you know, if they're having some issues and then some addiction situations, but I think we did some things and I think we wound up being okay with the Mobile transfer.
That's right, we've taken several to Mobile, you know, at their request. There's a facility there that does a lot of work, a lot of help, offers a lot of help, offers on the job training, offers them from day one a place to stay and then helps them buy, helps them, taken a few over there, quite a few actually. And, you know, with the understanding that if they absolutely did not like it, we'd bring them back. Most have stayed, a few have come back. There's some other organizations around that we've been talking to lately that are trying to come up with, you know, like I said, from several different directions, things that we can do that will, that will help. The reality of it is, and this is just me speaking, but I seem to have, I seem to get a lot of support from the mental health people on this, we don't have a homeless problem. It's a mental health problem is what we have and that's, that's the way we need to start looking at it, is from a mental health standpoint. Probably 80% of the ones that we're saying are homeless, maybe homeless, but the reality of it is they have some type of psychological problem and/or an addiction problem. So that's the directions that we're trying to come at to work on those things. If the money was there, mental health like it was, you know, 10 years ago, this wouldn't be quite the problem that it is now.
I think we've identified at least a location for the assessment, you know, a central assessment facility that you can interact with the various agencies but in one spot and you're aware of those things. And that's still on the radar, but haven't had an update on the acquisition of those properties, but I think we're circling and trying to get a center of gravity to move that way.
More and more on board helping with that.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Chief. I mentioned earlier I'd sent the other councilmen and some received, some didn't, just a spreadsheet on compensation, just my thoughts on that. And since some of you didn't receive it, I re-sent it to your city account and also your personal email address. I'd appreciate it if you'd just play around with a little, maybe give it some serious considerations so that when we meet at some point in November, talk about compensation for the remainder of the city employees, that we could at least have some discussion on that. I think it's a terrific idea, but that's just me. It's better than terrific, it's an outstanding idea, Mayor.
As long as you're not perplexed.
I'm not perplexed, I'm past perplexment, but thank you. The other thing is, and I know Mr. Leonard's looking at this, we've had a number of waterline breaks and edged water estates and I know in West Biloxi and some of these older neighborhoods, you have the transite, which is asbestos concrete water lines and they're aging. So I know he's putting together a list for me and I appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Leonard. Also, we received the other councilmen, I don't know if they noticed yet, but in their, in the papers here at their seat, there was an update on the capital projects list. Thank you, Mr. Leonard, for that. Appreciate it, that's all I have.
I have a few things. Number one, Mike and I met and I think this might be a Jerry thing as well, out at Lamy Subdivision, I can't think of the name of it off the top of my head, right there on the, right there by Larkin where we have the?
Right, Eastland.
Eastland, yes, today and he said once his guys get finished with the auction, they're gonna get out there and get that cleaned up, but we need to find, figure out how to keep that because that is an emergency access and there's trees and stuff growing up into that road. So if something happened on the front side of that subdivision, it would be difficult to get in on the backside. And so whatever preventative measures we have to keep to get all that, keep that stuff from growing back, we need to do. Also, at some point, a big portion of that fence that we had put up has been taken down, tore down or something and so we need to get that looked at too, to see about getting that put backed up to separate those two areas. Secondly, I wanted to ask Jerry, I've received a couple of calls this week from people who are short-term rentals in the city and they're noticing multiple short-term rentals pop up that they don't believe are licensed in the city. So I know we have a guy in place that monitors that, what's the process of that? Is that something he checks daily, weekly, monthly? Or how does that work to make sure that, you know, that people aren't operating illegally?
No, Frederick is there every day and that's what he does, is monitor the internet for short-term rentals and he's constantly bringing websites to my office.
Okay.
Show me, you know, to determine what the next step is. We handle it just like any other code violation.
So there's a, there's a long process to it, basically.
Correct, yes.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I'd never received those calls before and I had two this week, so I guess recently a large influx of them has popped up or something.
If you'll make us aware of them, we'll jump right on in.
Yeah, and I don't know any, any specific, I just received those two calls, so I wanted to ask that.
Jerry, is Frederick, I have a question along those same lines too. When he, you know, looks at these websites, is there a street address that's usually with these folks?
No, most of them, alright, if they have a license, then they'll put the address on there. If they don't have a license, then they typically will not put the address on there. So what we have to do is to kind of look at the pictures, maybe of the outside of the house or the inside and try to determine where it is and we found a number of them just based on that, you know, something there looks familiar and we'll go out and find it. Now, remember too, that a lot of these websites that say Biloxi, the house is not really in Biloxi, they just use Biloxi because of the name recognition.
How do you book it if you don't have the address?
They book it online, they.
Alright, so if you hit book, it'll pull up the address, but if you just search it, it doesn't have the address, is that what you're saying?
If you go to, if you go to the website, if they're not licensed, typically the address is not there, they'll just tell you the general proximity and you contact them, they, sometimes we've been able to find out by calling in, you know, to try to rent something, but they've, they get wise to that, you know, and so they kind of see where the call is coming from and it makes them cautious about it.
How much is the fine, Jerry?
It would depend on whether it's a first-time fine or a second-time fine, the first-time typically the judge can fine them, you know, $300 with a warning not to let it happen again and then if they do, then she can increase that fine.
One of the people mentioned that they know that they're not licensed because a couple of them that had popped up are in areas that you have to go through the process and so they look at the agenda every week to see if any new ones are coming or not and they know that these haven't come, so that's how they knew that they weren't, that they weren't part of the.
Right.
You gotta get a conditional use for them.
Well, I mean, I don't want to be, you know, like the Chinese Communist Party or anything, but you know, when you're inquiring and you're, you know, I may ask, there's a way to, as soon as you catch that, then there's a way to say, hey, this is an issue, you know?
Yes, sir.
You know, from where they, there's a way to do that.
And then the last thing that I have, that's all, thank you.
I just have a comment and observation on this topic. I was speaking with somebody who pointed me to an application, Air DNA, and I said, how does that work? And they said, well, how many short-term rentals do you have in Biloxi? I think we have almost 370 or somewhere thereabouts. And boom, on the screen, and what it does is this analytic application pulls from all the platforms and they said, well, you got 460 and not only that, if you click on these locations, it'll tell you the average number of days they've been rented and what the average rate is and so I'm thinking, I said, well, what does that run you? And I think the price I was quoted was a hundred bucks a month?
Yeah.
Or something, but there's something out there that may help us and may simplify somebody's job somewhere. Thanks, that's all.
And then, just like George said, I've received multiple calls from people throughout the departments asking where we are on the raise and so the, as quick as we can get that done, we need to. And then the last thing, do y'all know, ballpark off the top of your head, where we ended the fiscal year with the cash balance? I know we had talked anywhere from seven to nine or something like that, do y'all know where we ended up?
I think it was 6.6, but we've hit it a couple, is Diana back there somewhere? No, she's not done yet.
Okay.
We've got the last of the dockets, 422, and there were some things, we're in the middle of that right now, aren't we? We'll know that, but as of 9:30 and looking at the cash balance, I think we were at 6.8 in.
So somewhere in that ballpark of where the estimate was.
But that's just cash related to general fund and not all cash equivalents and so forth.
Good deal, that's all I have, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Got a few things on my report. First and foremost, had a nice trip to Perk, Perkinsville with the mayor. The mayor was the honorary captain and he flipped the ceremonial coin at the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College game against Jones. If Mississippi lost, they go home. If they win the game, they host a playoff game this week. Well, and they're hosting the playoff game and they won the South State Championship, so Mayor Fofo brought that mojo to Perk.
Number four in the country, I mean, if number four in the country.
Number four in the country and they put him on in that second half, they had a boy actually from the coast, was the kicker, made all his kicks, kicked a couple of them through the end zone on kickoffs and made his field goal and they kind of pulled away. So kudos to Dr. Graham, she was unavailable, she was in DC. Dr. Lad Taylor took us on a tour of the campus, it's not your daddy's or your mama's perk anymore, it's quite a campus.
Those paths that you and Donnie used to go by when you were sneaking back into the campus, they're not there anymore, so it's all paved and all that.
Yeah, they closed all those loopholes and everything, but anyway, it was a great time there and it was, it was fun and get to see the success of that campus is great. Onto this weekend, had an opportunity at AJ Holloway Sportsplex to host a BPA baseball tournament, there was over 30 teams at the tournament, it rained a little bit, we held our breath, we squeegeed off some of the rainwater into the drains and we were able to play ball and the weather kind of cleared up quickly after we had rain late in the afternoons. I saw our fire chief out there, he was competing and coaching and yelling and screaming and all that kind of stuff, so that, that was good to see. Third thing, I want to thank Director Creel, he spent some time to go visit David and Sarah Hickman out at the Hickman property, there's a little controversy up there for decades, you know, what kind of activities going on. We had a good conversation with them, there's two, there's a few parcels of land out there that's, that's trying to be controlled or acquired. They are cleaning up the property, which seemed to be acceptable. However, there is some activity out there that needs to be addressed with a relative that's a little questionable with some dumpsters being filled with some recyclable looking debris that's not allowed. He made the comment that his brother had a business license and Director told him, well, we have a cease and desist order for any activity out there, it's supposedly reverted back to agriculture, the zoning and so we're trying to take care of some of that up front. There's an old boat and there's some garbage up there and some trash and some junk and we need to clear that up. I think Director said he'll try to take steps to try to clean that up. On the flip side, some of the residents that are a little antsy wanting to know what is going on, I did have a conversation with them, told them be patient, we think it's going in the right direction. Everybody wants it cleaned up and looked beautiful, there's plans to put a fence around it and there's a structure that he wants to put a brick facade and fence it for some agricultural activity potential in the future. So again, bottom line, thank you Director for taking time and going out there with me, I appreciate that. Let's see, Neighborhood Watch, I met with the Neighborhood Watch President in Pops Ferry Landing, just wanted to give the chief an update on that. I know you had a question, do they have a petition that they're circulating? The answer is not yet. What the president has done, he's opened up Facebook poll and he's polling everybody that he has of record to see what kind of interest they have on putting speed tables or speed deterrents. Once he gets that information, then he'll move to circulating a petition. They'll get that in my hands and I'll turn it over to the traffic committee. One thing he did request, Mike, was if there was a speed table or a speed deterrent, what does it look like? I know we have, I don't know if it's similar to the one or identical to the one that we already placed?
I can get you some pictures. There are several in the city that we've installed and each one's a little different.
Okay, I think that's the question.
I'd love to be able to pick up the one in Taylor Oaks and just move it over there.
I wish we could do it too, but that's what they're asking for, you know, what does it look, look like? And I think they can answer their poll if they kind of have an idea of what is exactly the plan on what we're putting down there. And then last, I'll end with this, on Summer Lane, I appreciate Mike Leonard and Public Works and Engineering getting involved with extending the utilities to a parcel that is, there's an owner trying to develop it. Appreciate y'all getting involved and giving consideration on extending those utilities. With that, that concludes my report.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask Chief Miller a question?
Yes, sir, sure, sure.
Chief, everybody knows the city has the problem with mental health, the state, the United States, what happened to the funding or what happened to support? I mean, it's something that's major throughout everywhere. What you said, we lost it 10 years ago.
Yeah, it's been about 10 years ago, they cut funding nationally and in the state for mental health support. That's a, and they've never replaced it. I couldn't tell you why, but that, that actually took place.
Because that is a major problem, so is there anything we can do to the city? Anybody, we have to approach to try to have something to put back together?
I think, I think a lot of groups have approached on the state level, trying to get funding back in place and some, there has been some movement towards refunding it, but not, not to the extent that it needs to be.
So there's no facility locally at all to help the mental health?
There's several facilities around.
But pay insurance, somebody's not?
Some of them, some of them are paid, some of them you have to have insurance. The state does have a facility and they have a few beds there, not nearly enough to take care of the issue that we have.
I mean, you're right, that's the biggest problem with most of the homeless.
Right, it absolutely is.
You know, they have to have their medicine, they have to be taken care of.
That's right.
So I was just wondering, is something we can do?
We've made a lot of racket all through the state, you know, we've made a lot of racket about this and we'll see where it goes. I know there's a lot of private business owners that have also made a lot of, lot of rackets.
Yeah, I just wondered if somewhere the city itself could help, step this up, go after something, because that needs to be done, if it's possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Chief, I just want to, kudos to you too, we had a. Chief, I just want to, kudos to you, too. We had an incident with a gentleman. You recall this about a week ago. They had a gentleman that was suffering from some mental health issues and displaying some behavior. Biloxi PD has gotten involved a little bit, and he's getting treatment now. But I think we handled that the proper way, and, or you handled it the proper way, and I appreciate that. But it's like Jell-O. We got so many issues, and they're real complex. I mean, this mental health thing is real complex, or addiction, or a combination of both, like you mentioned earlier. And we do have to stay engaged. I know there's an autism center, I believe, in DeIverville, and we do have several mental health facilities that try to do their best. A lot of times they require insurance, or they require consent from the adult if there isn't someone that has custody over someone that's above, you know, 21 or whatever the age is. So it does become complex.
It does.
Question, Chief, and Peter, if you'd listen with one ear. Are there, you know, we have community court to deal with a number of issues, code-related and so forth. Do they have mental health courts or something similar throughout the state? Are you aware of anything like that? I'm wondering if it might be helpful if we had, if such a creature exists that might give us some leverage with some, maybe some nonprofits or access to some sort of financial assistance or whatever. It's, I mean, you know, if 2% of the population has mental health issues, we have 50,000 in Biloxi, 2% of that is what? Mayor, you're a math major. What's the answer? Spit it out.
Thousand.
Thousand. There you go. That's correct. I mean, we have 1,000 people with mental health issues, and if half of those are getting treatment, that still leaves 500 that chiefs. Not always, but sooner or later, you're going to run into some of those. And I know y'all deal with people walking in with issues. So that's all. I'll just, but check on that and see if there's a.
I had an answer for you.
Well, I'll wait patiently.
There is a, there is a mental court, I guess for lack of a better word, in Forest County. I've sent Judge April Ready up there a couple of times to observe and to get a handle on what they're doing and how they do it. And just as importantly, to try to assess what the cost of that would be. So that's in the works, but I think we'd have to maybe hire a couple of extra employees in the court system that would, that are almost like social workers that would, because they, part of what they do is follow up on people and follow up on the family, and it's more of a, I think it's still called mental, whatever they call it. It's essentially a social worker that the city has.
Right. And, I mean, Judge Ready does the community court, and I've sit in occasionally, and she does an excellent job. So I mean, if she's interested in that, and this would operate under her purview or whatever, I think it could only lead to good outcomes.
Yes.
That's a good question and a good, but I was thinking, SMPDD had a number of workers that would assist that. Now, I wouldn't mind, you know, inquiring there. So a couple of both of those efforts, we may be able to get some real impact on that.
Yeah, I mean, there's just, there's just a lack of support, financial personnel, and somehow we've got to figure out how to help the police department. They're the ones that deal with all of this when.
So the ask, would you maybe give us three or four folks related just to that purpose and see how we could fund it and see how we could incorporate that in our system?
And that's part of the discussion that's going on with the center that the mayor was talking about earlier. That's the one there that's mental health qualified. You know, we have officers trained, accident officers trained, and they have the authority to say, yes, someone's going through a mental episode right now. So they have the authority to take control of that person and then take them to a single point of entry. And from there is kind of where the, where the problem starts, because if there's no money to cover it, then.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anyone else before we close? Counsel reports. Anybody else have anything?
Thank you.
Mike, I know we spoke with Billy Ray regarding the Lauren Falls-Taylor Oaks drainage issue. Do we have a projected timeline?
Which, which job?
The.
Campbell Drive?
Yep.
That's finished.
We've already put the pipes in?
Right. But Billy Ray's not here.
He's not?
He reported to me that that job is finished. They dug the ditch out, added a pipe, ran the pipe across a couple of the backyards.
Okay.
And the easement. And he reported to me that the project was complete.
Well, that's a good update. I'll go by there and talk to the residents, let them know that it's been done, and see how everyone feels about it. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the council reports, move on to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We have a total time of 45 minutes for this segment. When you're recognized, raise your hand. You'll be recognized. Come up to the front, sign in legibly, your name and your address, state it for the record clearly. And then we'll go from there. So anyone on my left, your right, come on up?
I'm Robert Schwartz. I'm an attorney in Biloxi. I'm here, just wanted to address the council briefly on one of the matters that's pending this evening. It's on policy agenda item C, which is a resolution to grant preliminary subdivision approval of a plat for Greg Williams. We've previously been before this body on the tree case that was approved, and that was resolved about, if my memory is correct, four to five weeks ago, where the council gave consent to the request to remove a few trees that were protected by ordinance. As just a brief overview, this is a subdivision that consists of a total of about 38.66 acres, of which only 24.65 acres will be developed. The balance of that property is going to be donated. The balance includes wetlands. So to be clear, we're not plating anything in wetlands. All the wetlands, which are a separate parcel, to the Coastal Trust for preservation purposes. So there's no issue related to that. We have met with the city. Of course, we went through your DRC process and your planning commission and received their suggestion for approval of all of this. We've also had all the engineering plans submitted to the city and have separately received the engineering plan approvals for the construction. So to be clear, we're only here on a simple subdivision at this point. We have addressed everything that the city has asked us to address. We have addressed everything that was brought up previously in planning commission and otherwise. So if there are questions that exist regarding the project, I'd be happy to address them in full when it is brought before your council this evening. I also have Chris Reiman here, who is a project engineer. I have Greg Williams present, who is the developer and owner of the property. So I want to answer any questions, if there are any, so that there's not any misunderstanding of the facts.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right, this side of the room? Anyone else on my right, your left? Come on up.
Hello. My name is Kirsten Hansen. I live at 12096 Shorecrest Road. This is also in regards to item 4C. My husband, David Hansen, has stood before this council many times in protest of this proposed development. He is unable to make it today due to health issues, but outrage over this proposed development goes far beyond me or my husband. I have provided to all of you a copy of the community's petition with 280 signatures on it. It's an updated copy, and I would like it to be submitted to the record. The majority of these signatures represent our neighbors that will be directly impacted by this development. A lot of them are here with me today. If you look at the top of, look at the map at the top of your packet and read the comments of those people that signed the petition. Envision not just those of us in the room, but also the voices of all those that signed the petition. We have concerns regarding flooding, roads that cannot handle this increase in traffic, schools that are already at capacity, environmental issues, infrastructure that is insufficient to support this proposed development. Our ditches, our roads, and our community cannot handle 25, sorry, 52 new homes at this time. You can see from the provided map that our whole community is concerned. It's not isolated to us. This is the vast majority of those that live in the surrounding area. Please use your best judgment in your vote today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. I'm Janelle Blum with Dukes Dukes Keating and Fanica, and I'm here on behalf of David and Kirsten Hansen, and I'll try to cover just some of the main points. Mr. Schwartz said, this is an application for a subdivision with 52 homes. There's five contiguous parcels. It's 38 and change acres. 14 and change of those are wetlands. So the construction of these 52 homes and the infrastructure will really be on 24 of those acres. I've given you each a package that's clipped and has tabs on the side. If you would turn to tab one, if you have a moment to look, this is a tax map of the vicinity. And on this, there's actually, you can see the green dots represent 52 homes. So you can see how big of an area this is that has 52 homes in it to begin with. Actually, that's a two-page exhibit, slightly different areas, but they each represent 52 homes. If you look on the map, we have acreage on each of those parcels also. And there's one that has right about in the center, 23.5 acres. So that's roughly what you're going to be looking at, putting all of these homes into that 23.5 acre. It's not consistent with the neighborhood. I realize it is zoned for that. But if you look at what's actually out there, a lot of these homes have several parcels under common ownership that are contiguous. So that makes it even more acreage per home for what's actually out there. You've already granted the tree permit to remove four protected trees and disturb the critical root system for 15 more. The tree committee, though, said that eight of the 52 lots are undevelopable due to the trees. There will be more trees impacted if this 52, excuse me, 52 homes to go in. And once it gets to the residential applications, my understanding of ordinance is they don't even have to mitigate those trees. As far as the wetlands, 37% of this property is wetlands. If you would look at tab six, that will show you, this is not, you don't even have to have a wetlands delineation to see that this is wetlands. This 14 acres is actually underwater. The application describes the topography as very flat with a plus or minus 1.2% slope in 12 feet. Can I get someone to yield some time to me?
I'm sorry, your time's expired.
Okay. All right.
I think we got your, I think we got the gist of what you're trying to say, though. Thank you. You'll have more time to respond if called up when this comes up for discussion. Okay?
My name's Howard Nix. I'm a coach at North Woolmarket Middle School. Hey, Mr. Barrett, Ms. Newman, good to see y'all, council. I'm not going to get into the details of that big report y'all have. I've been on Shorecrest Road that's the corner of Boyette Road since 1999, and our schools are getting full. We added Creek Bend Elementary School this year. We're already filling back up. We lost a few teachers from North Woolmarket, but our classes are already filled up again. My youngest daughter went to North Woolmarket the year it was built, and all of my children, who I've got grandkids in college now, they all had to go to DeIverville or North Woolmarket because Biloxi, we could not go to Biloxi schools, though we lived in the Biloxi School District. So that's one concern. The other is certainly the traffic on that road. It feeds Eagle Point. Probably the average chief, the average speed limit on that road pass and the water treatment is probably 60 to 80, if not higher on that straightaway. I thought a good thing for this would be to y'all build a Biloxi substation, Biloxi Police Department substation, and put it right there, maybe. But I just think that land could be used for something a lot better. I don't think it's suited for a subdivision, the way it's shaped. Something could go in there that would keep the beauty of that area a lot, I think, nicer. And just to get creative and come up with something that would be a lot better, that property, there's an old house on there. It's just a nice little area. I just don't think it's suited for a subdivision. Drainage, I already have water pour across my street onto Cindy Hood's property, which is, they have a business across the street from us, and it pours over that road every time it rains, and cars hit that. And so it's, I just don't think it's good. But y'all decide that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. I'll come back to you in a minute. Anyone else on this side of the room? Yes, sir.
I'm Dick Porter. I live in Biloxi, Woolmarket, on Oaklawn Road, less than a quarter of a mile from where they're going to put this in. We used to be Woolmarket, and y'all annexed this, which y'all have a right to do. And we paid more and more taxes. And a lot of people out there don't see a lot for what we get for our taxes. But we keep getting more and more, and within three miles of my house, I bet you there's four new subdivisions. And now another one. And the roads out there are not that big, like he was saying. And I really don't think another one needs to go in there. I know one of the things that they promised us when we got annexed was sewer. We've not received it, but I guarantee you that they will probably get it if you put in the new subdivision. So I think y'all ought to look at Woolmarket a little bit differently and say, hey, do they really want it, or do they really need it? Because we do have quite a few of them already out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One more person over here who wants to speak?
Good evening. My name's Terry Bennett. I live at 9436 Boyette Road. I also oppose this subdivision, as stated last month when I was here for the meeting, that got canceled about this subdivision. I also oppose this subdivision, as stated last month when I was here for the meeting, that got canceled about this subdivision. I put thousands of dollars in my own drainage to go out to the road. We cannot get drainage fixed. My house floods every time it rains. The ditches flood. We can't get the city to take care of the current residents. We haven't had water or sewer on our road. We've been promised over fifteen years ago we'd get water and sewer. Can't get it. So we want to put in more people in crowded schools and take care of other people when we can't even take care of our current residents. My opinion, it's not taking care of your people that currently live here, so that's all I've got. Thank you for your time.
The lady in the back?
Hi, I'm Tammy Bryden Beck. Can I show you one thing? Every day, without a subdivision, this is me trying to get to my mailbox. And then I have to check, and then I have to look out, get the mail. This is with no television. Open the mailbox, try to get the, check it out, and then I have to run back before I can hit my several speeding cars. That's just without. I can't even imagine. And there's so much traffic with speeding cars up and down that road.
Ma'am, can I ask you, you need to speak into the microphone so we can record this for everybody watching.
The side of the roads and everything are just, there's ditches and everything. I cannot even think about even four or five houses going in, much less what's going to happen when there are fifty-two times two or three cars? So this is like the Kentucky Derby. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. You kind of look like Fofo there, kind of when he comes into the council meeting, you know, but anyway, thank you. Anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Yes, sir.
Doug, let me, two zero six Shorecrest, right directly across from this property. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Live right next door to Mr. Dave and Ms. Kirsten Hanson, right there. Both of us are directly going to be impacted by this property, the fifty-two homes right directly across. We talk about the road. The road is very narrow and no shoulder at all. I don't know if the city is going to address that, or is that going to be picked up by these people picking up, you know, picking up this property or not. But the road is very narrow, all the way from the church, coming from Lorraine Cowan, all the way down past to where the thirteen eight power lines are at. It is a thing everybody's been saying, and it is NASCAR going down through there right now. So we're going to add, what, fifty-two houses, maybe two cars per each house, another hundred cars going up and down through there. So the infrastructure there with the, certainly with the rail. At this time right now, we all have septic tanks, our own wells. Is this property going to help to provide more water, more sewage, so that we can tie into their grinder pumps that we're going to need? Because we're set way back. I'm sure they're just going to be taking care of this property. And power coming through there, I don't know. I'm sure the engineers have looked at all that. The road is a big thing, the high-speeded traffic and the large volume of cars is another thing. The, another thing that we all know, living here, this is a tax thing. We understand that. We're going to get some taxes for our great city of Biloxi. But, you know, everywhere we go, we see Horton, D.L. Horton Homes and Adams Homes or whatever is going in here, Elliott Homes. It's just going to wipe the property clean, something that is absolutely beautiful. It's going to take from that west side of Shorecrest and that whole beautiful area. And if you all know, looking at any of these homes, maybe you live near one, but you, when you're going to go, they're going to go in there, they're just moving a few trees. But it's going to wipe it clean. And I know if it's, you know, getting tax-based, that's great. But going into these large development homes that come in there that have very zero lot lines, it's just going to wipe them clean. And that's one thing we're really concerned about, because it's been a country area, rural area, now we're, you know, now we've got this property. So I hope that Biloxi's looking at the fact that there is a problem, big problem, the sewage plant's down to the south there. But the drainage going along that road is a problem. And certainly the road itself is a problem and needs assistance. And I hope that, you know, we can kind of keep this the way it is, this beautiful property. Appreciate the time, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room that I missed on both sides that want to speak? If there being no one, we'll go ahead and close this in comments. We do need to go into executive session, so at this time, I'll call that the council go into closed session. I'll entertain a motion for the council to go into closed session for the purpose of examining the necessity to go into executive session to discuss economic development issue.
My move.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to one. Deming opposed. The chair will entertain a motion for the council to conclude the closed session and reconvene in an open meeting.
My move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six one. Deming opposed. The chair will now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
My move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to one. We're now in executive session.
Y'all can join us.
Resolution to appoint a president of the Biloxi City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Tizbale?
Well, with his track record, I'm sure he'll make a, make a good president. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, anybody wants to serve, let him serve.
Okay.
Back on the balance scale.
Give everybody a chance here. Mr. Barrett?
I'm just hoping he can get us through these meetings quicker than you do. I'm just kidding, Kenny.
All right, Ms. Newman, you sit on the side of him over there. All right, Mr. Deming. It's with pleasure that I turn the gavel over to Mr. Gines and present you with your new president. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you once again. All righty. Let's get cranked up with the second, my vice president. Carrie?
Resolution to appoint a vice president of the Biloxi City Council.
Entertaining motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Tizbale?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any questions?
None whatsoever. Ms. Newman will make a terrific vice president, as she always has.
Absolutely. Mr. Lawrence?
Same thing. She wants to serve, go get it.
All right, anyone else?
I'm just ready to celebrate with some coffee, you know.
Great, great, great. Okay, I'm going to call for the question. All in favor? Okay, unanimous, six, seven zero. All right, congratulations, Madam Vice President. All righty, we're going to move on to C, item C. Carrie?
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plat with variances for a fifty-two lot, single-family residential. Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plat with variances for a fifty-two lot, single-family residential subdivision for five hundred and thirty parcels fronting Shorecrest Road.
I make a motion to deny to grant.
Move, uh, move by Nathan Barrett to deny, and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. We're gonna open it up for questions, Mr. Barrett.
I guess I'll preface this by saying that, uh, my record shows that I'm not anti-development, but I am for smart development that doesn't adversely affect the surrounding area. And, um, and in this situation, it does. Secondly, I lived in Eagle Point until recently for, I don't know, close to twenty years, and I traveled Shorecrest every day. And that road is absolutely not, not big enough to add a subdivision. Eagle Point is, if not the biggest individual subdivision, it's one of the largest subdivisions in the city of Biloxi. And no real large new development has went in there, in, in that area, in many years, most of those homes, other than homes that were rebuilt after Katrina and homes that were built, rebuilt on lots that have already been there. You have a handful of homes right there on Shorecrest, um, just south of the bridge. But it, it's, I think, Jerry, if I remember right, seven or eight homes, something like that, right on the curve. Nothing to, to, to really, um, cause a, a large impact, um, to that. As a couple of the people have already stated, the infrastructure, not just the road, and recently, we went and we spent twenty-seven thousand dollars to, to patch up the road, but the road is not big enough, but there's no water and sewer. And, um, the, the water sewer is not available to the people who already live there, and we can't continue to take water and sewer to places that we, and leave people that we've made promises to for many years without water and sewer. The schools are another issue. Um, again, I'm not anti-subdivision, but I, I do believe that it has to make sense, not only for the developer, but for the area surrounding it, so I can't support this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barrett. Uh, Mr. Lawrence?
I support the Council Ward Seven.
Okay. Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming?
Yeah, like, uh, Mr. Barrett, I'm a strong supporter of development, um, definitely need more people in Biloxi, I know it's, it's, it's not just taxes, I think one of our, one of our residents mentioned taxes, but it's not just taxes. People bring value to the city, value that's, that's measurable in different ways, um, circulate, circulating more money, local economies, filling jobs, creating more demand for new jobs. It's extremely important to bring and attract more people into our city and get them to spend money in our city, earn money in our city, raise their kids in our city, and, and create that cycle, however, this is probably the only subdivision that's given me heartburn. I've been out there and spoken with residents and met with people, and, and I agree, one of the concerns that we have with Wool Market after annexing it so long ago and failing to provide services to those areas, isn't really a reason I would deny this, but my concern is how are we gonna provide services to those areas? And how is the infrastructure, the roads, the size of the roads, the capacity of the roads, and the, and the, the ditches, um, next to those roads, gonna maintain an average of ninety-seven new cars? I think the American household average, um, is one point eight cars per household, one point eight times fifty-two is ninety-seven new cars on that road daily. That's what gives me the most heartburn, and I could support this development if I had some, some assurances or some plans that I knew we could provide the infrastructure, meaning the roadways, the pathways to and from the homes, as well as the water and sewer. At this moment, I'm not in support without that evidence. That's all I have. President, um, Guines?
Thank you, Ms. Glavin?
Yeah, uh, listen, we hear you, and, uh, to the residents, uh, and to the developer that came and spoke tonight, we appreciate you. Uh, to those who signed this petition, I know in your heart, you're Wool Market, in our heart, you're Biloxi, and, um, we're trying to get those utilities and the things that we promised for infrastructure to you. If you see all the plans that we have, uh, you know, for improvements in Ward Seven, we are committed to that. Don't think we're not committed to it, I know it feels like it, but we're gonna get to you, and, um, I'll support Nathan, and, uh, and I'll support the residents, uh, that, that have, uh, come out and, and kind of spoken. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Glavin, Dr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Nothing, and I also have nothing. Okay, um, any other questions?
Basically, I feel like, Demming, um, I said before in the last subdivision we had to vote on Wool Market, that, um, I wanted to see surveys throughout Wool Market, if the accusations of flooding and traffic and whatnot is true. Um, I still haven't gotten any surveys, so I, I just have to run through all, um, voting on the new subdivision. So I'm gonna abstain. I don't wanna sit down for division.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone else, any other comments? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor?
Of deny.
Of deny.
All, all in favor to deny? Deny. Okay, that's, um, go ahead, hands up one time, all right? Thank you, six, uh, Dixie is staying in, and I'm gonna vote for it. Okay? Five, five, one, one. Okay? Resolution fails. Okay, we're gonna move on to policy agenda number four. Carrie?
Resolution authorizing entry into memorandum of understanding between Mississippi Power, Harrison County, and City of Biloxi, et cetera.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, that was moved by Ms. Glavin, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Who was it?
I made the motion.
Okay, Dr. Tisdale, sorry, Dr. Tisdale. And seconded by Mr. Lawrence, Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, just in looking through this, and for the benefit of those out there who may be watching this, Mississippi Power submitted an assessment of its public utility property to the Department of Revenue in June of twenty-two. But it contained some assessment errors in assessment values between taxing districts within Harrison County. So Mississippi Power acknowledges these errors and has submitted corrected revised tax assessment numbers of its public utility property between taxing districts in Harrison County. So that's not only for Biloxi, that also impacts Paschus Jan, Long Beach, Gulfport, and DeIverville. So that's, that's what we're voting on. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence? Are you finished? Finished? Ms. Lawrence?
One question, Peter. You know, I know with the, the more people moving to Wool Market, the more we lose in the Biloxi High School District. So how's that affect the, they go to county school, they don't go to Biloxi High. So how's that affect the taxes, since we're steadily moving more people to Wool Market, but yet we're losing tax pay, as far as the school system?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not answering the question. You know, basically, uh, this was the assessment, both the schools, and, and error was made in the assessment of transmission lines, which, in effect, about nineteen million dollars in, in assessed value from the Beech, actually, from Veterans to the Beech Road, which is City of Biloxi and going north, that was in error, moved those, the values to, uh, Gulfport, in essence. So that not only, why assessed value, but the school districts, uh, forty-three something mills, uh, translate to, for us, that would impact this, this error cost, yeah, again, costing budgetary, why, seven hundred thousand dollars, which we budgeted for.
Mayor, what he's, I think what he's asking?
Yeah, I'm asking.
All the people who are moving to Wool Market, because it's growing so much, that money doesn't come into Biloxi's school system.
Right.
And so, how, how big of an impact is that having on the, the, the taxes that would normally go into the Biloxi school system, that's now going to Harrison County?
We're not talking about the same thing, but it's fifteen mills.
That's what, that's what he was asking.
I know, it's, it's, uh, I, I think that's a better question for the Biloxi School District about what their attendance is. Their attendance is also increasing. I think their taxes are also increasing, certainly if, if, if half of Wool Market or all of Wool Market or North Biloxi, if that was in the Biloxi School District, uh, they would increase that much more, and, and I heard the, the complaints about overcrowding in the Harrison County Schools. Uh, Biloxi School District has assured us, they can, they can accept and they can find room, absorb.
That's right.
Any, anybody that wants to come to Biloxi, they can absorb them. They have the capacity.
Let me follow up, and, and I want to make my point on them, we're not talking about, uh, the, we're talking about what you, as a, a citizen of Biloxi, not in Wool Market, you pay forty-three mills to the city's Biloxi Public Schools. In Wool Market, they pay fifty-five mills to the county, they still pay thirty mills to the city. So, in effect, had that been, you know, uh, when it was done, those people were, you know, about taxes, there would be a, a reduction of about twelve mills, if those schools were absorbed in the City of Biloxi Public Schools.
But it, it's a legislative thing where they, they fix that, like, if you annex an area, they did that to protect the county schools, the county stu, schools still get theirs. Now, you look at some analysis of how much has the county schools benefited by all the growth in Biloxi, uh, what proportion? Because they haven't lost anything by the annexation, they've only gained by the annexation.
The school district.
The school, the Harrison County School District.
My, my, my point was, in the years to come, and we move more and more people to Wool Market, you will shrink the Biloxi High School System.
No.
No.
No, you will not. How can you shrink it, you're not in there anyhow?
Yeah, I'm just telling you it's gonna happen, vote for it, steady moving.
And you're not gonna shrink it, it won't grow.
Just pay attention.
All right.
Hey, I'm paying attention, I'm living breath these things.
Or two is already.
What you're saying is the attendance, the proportion, percentages will shift.
Stay on topic, please.
Of total attendance, is what you're saying.
The legislature, whatever you have to do to put the Wool Market School System into the Biloxi School System.
That's right.
That's what you have to do.
And it would give those people who lived in a twelve-mill reduction in their taxes.
Yeah, we can't do it, you have to get somebody to do that.
No, we can do that by, by exercising some of the.
Do it, that's the move that we need to make, to get the legislature to do that.
Not the legislature.
Wool Market will fill up.
That's one path.
That's where it's coming.
That is one path.
That's one path.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say again.
Okay.
That's one path, we're saying the same thing, we're trying to hit the same chord, those people need to be in.
Yeah, but I understand, you will shrink, this is the Biloxi.
I'd agree with that, they need to be in the city, City of Biloxi Public Schools, that needs to be, if, if you're in Biloxi, and you live in the City of Biloxi, you should be able to attend Biloxi Public Schools.
Duh, duh.
All right, I think we finally strike the right chord.
Okay, what were we talking about initially?
Well, I, I just wanna.
Let's, let's, let's roll on, you finished yours?
Yes, I'm.
Okay, Ms. Newman? Okay, Mr. Demming? Okay, Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, I just wanna follow up, I don't know if y'all discussed this when I stepped out of the room, but in my ward, there's two divi, subdivision, right now, there's probably ninety percent, and, and when I campaigned last time, one of the big things that, when I knocked on doors, parents with children that are either paying tuition, or that they wanna go to our schools, that, that was a predominant question. How do I get in Biloxi Schools? I got an email today, I'll forward to you, you know, up in Wool Market, and it's actually in your ward, um, but it, how do I get into Biloxi Schools? You know, and they, they see the benefit, they see, you know, they wanna be, they, they, they live in Biloxi, they wanna be in Biloxi Schools, you know?
Well, you know, along those lines, I wanna make this point too, and then, then maybe six hundred people, six hundred kids that would, would enjoy that, but six hundred against seven thousand, you can reduce the taxes for seven thousand people by twelve mills. That's the difference between city schools and county schools right now, fifty-five versus forty-three.
Uh, one, one parent had three kids, and this is a single mother, and she's putting the three kids in Biloxi School and paying, biting the bullet and paying that tuition.
No.
Barely getting by, you can tell, and, uh, putting three kids in Biloxi.
There was some, certainly some challenges that, in Biloxi, has been, you know, Biloxi Public Schools has been great in, in, in accommodating those things, like for exchange students and, and those kinds of things, when they couldn't get into other places, like DeIverville.
Yep.
No. George, did I make that clear?
Again?
Did I make it clear, I just wanna know?
Clear as mud. All right, Dr. Tisdale?
Uh, there are, there are a number of advantages for the residents of Wool Market community, who live in the City of Biloxi, to have their children attend Biloxi Schools. And there's a financial component of that, there's an instructional component, there's a resource component, and, uh, I'm sure Mr. Abid has become conversant on this topic, and it's not just a matter of, okay, do this, okay, and it happens. It's, it's a, a long haul, but Mayor, you look kinda froggy.
No, I'm perplexed, I'm perplexing right now.
Okay.
No, but along those lines, if you have no interest in any kids or whatever, if you're interested in reducing your taxes.
There you go.
That's what, that's way you get a, a, you know, ten, eleven, twelve percent reduction in mileage, if you have nothing to do with education, you just wanna live at a cheaper rate, that's a possibility.
My comments are over. Thank you. Mr. Guines, thank you.
Dr. Tisdale, all righty. All right, Ms. Barrett?
That cat's out the box.
You have no, no dog in this hunt? All right. Okay, well, uh, any, no other questions, uh, call for the questions, all in favor? Okay, seven, zero, motion carries. I need a motion on a consent agenda? Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded, I'll second it. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, uh, I called Rachel yesterday, and asked, maybe she come and explain this, Rachel? We got, uh, eight thousand, six hundred and forty-two amended things on the, eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-one, whatever you wanna call it. Can you explain what you're doing in these numbers? Are we straightening out the numbers, correcting the numbers? I know it's not changing anything overall, but I'd like for you to explain this, so, because there's so many of them, there's probably half the consent, more than half.
When the twenty-three budget was adopted, we presented a total overall of the capital projects that was estimated on what it would be, it was based in June, when you get these numbers. Between June and September, we're getting grant reimbursements in, we're continuing construction, we're going forward, this simply brings the capital project budget at close to you, to show you where we actually were as of September thirtieth, to roll to October first. So there's not, there's no additional monies being added to any projects, nothing's being reallocated, it's simply to reconcile reality to your estimates.
House cleaning.
And, and for audit purposes also.
Yes, for audit as well.
We do this pretty much every November, I mean, and the same thing in the, speaking of schools, they do the same thing, I'm sure, just about every business does that. So you know where you finish the year and have good budget numbers to start the next year, thank you.
The next one is K, is that just gives us permission to sell all the surplus this weekend? Is that what that's pretty much stating? The truck, car, the everything y'all selling?
Auction, yes, auction, K.
That pretty much what K is?
That's the au, the auction is, uh, November fifth.
Next, next weekend, this coming weekend.
Yeah, so that's what this is, giving us permission.
But before we auction something, it has to be declared excess, and you, and you have to approve that.
And that's that list you give us here?
That's it.
That's, that's.
You, you approved one at your last meeting for Public Works, and this is everybody else.
I know we paying for the equipment in O'Reilly and Savarona, and I was asking about the fence for Savara, do we have something, are we, anything yet, we have to set something up yet?
That's part of the, of the, of the Works, or the, the project, capital project, and the funding sources gonna be the remainder of that bond?
All right.
Handle those, uh, auction recreation items, as well as the fencing.
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Ms. Glavin?
Nothing.
Dr. Tisdale?
Not a thing.
Ms. Barrett?
Um, I have no exceptions, I'd just like to say thanks, um, for getting, I think it's item in, the, with Harrison County, and it's always a win when we can get fifty percent of the road that's in the city limits paid for by the county.
Okay, great, I'm gonna call for the question, and, uh, any exceptions, I'll do afterward. So I'm gonna call for the question, all in favor? Okay, seven, zero?
No reception.
Any exceptions, George, Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Ms. Glavin?
Nope.
Ms. T, Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Barrett? No exceptions. Okay, great. Resolution passed. I need a motion on the...
Routine agenda, so moved.
Oh, no, we got code enforcement here. No, no code enforcement, routine agenda. Yeah, Dr. Tisdale? You got that motion? Who has a second? Seconded by Mr. Lawrence.
All right, Walt, any update? Any good news?
Well, thankfully, we don't have any code enforcement. This meeting tonight will be short. We do have good news. MEMA has 1.64 million in step four or five. We should have that in the next seven days to the city, and that'll be followed by another 1.39 million.
All right, hey, that's good stuff. We updated, we keeping everything updated, pretty much, right?
Yes, sir.
We're not behind?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? None? Call for the question. All in favor? Seven, zero. Routine agenda passes. Need a motion to recess.
Second.
Mr. Demming, seconded by Mr. Glavin. All in favor?
Aye.
It's over.
Carrie, look, what time is it?
Go home.
Told Carrie we oughta be done by 7:35. Who made the second, Carrie, to recess? I didn't catch it.
Okay.